Tonight's city council meeting, we will have council member Jeru joining us via Zoom from the east coast. Now is time to convene our open session. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Baldino?
Present.
Councilmember Pershtik, here. Oops, I forgot you. Mr. Jeru?
I'm here as well.
Hey. Mayor Protemp in town?
Here.
And Mayor Boils is absent this evening.
Very well, we will lead off. Is Pastor Coe here to lead us in an invocation, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Pierstik? Pastor Coe, please join us at the podium.
All right, let us pray. Loving and divine one, we thank you that we can all gather here together, that no matter our religion, our race, our age, ability, orientation, identity, or experiences, that we can come together as a community, that we can share this space together and feel safe, to feel cared for, to feel together. We thank you for our city, this beautiful little town that we call home, that we call ours. We thank you for the council members here that are working and growing a beautiful, beloved community in this place. Will you be amongst us tonight for this meeting? Be within our hearts, our thoughts, our plans and decisions. May each one of us connect with the divine within, that throughout the meeting that each one of us comes first from a place of compassion, of seeing one another and recognizing the value in each and every one in this room. And in this meeting especially, we lift up the LGBTQIA community as we celebrate their rights and freedoms that we have fought so hard for. And as these same rights and freedoms are contested throughout our nation, as young queer and trans teens are facing discrimination, marginalization, mental and physical harm, we lift all of your beautiful children up to you. May the ideas and decisions that come out of this meeting tonight sow into the love, acceptance, and care for everyone that comes to live in our city. This we pray in the name that we all hold sacred. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Coe and Councilmember Pierstik. We will begin tonight's meeting with two special presentations. The first presentation will be given, or special proclamation, excuse me, first by Councilmember Baldino.
Thank you Mayor Protemp. All right, I have the following proclamation from the city of El Segundo. Whereas this nation was founded on the principle stated in the Declaration of Independence that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, but in which people who were African American were held in slavery for many years. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, which holds that all persons held as slaves within a state or designated part of a state shall be then, thenceforth, forever free, changing the legal status of 3.5 million enslaved African Americans from slave to free. And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation paved the way for the 13th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas news of the Emancipation Proclamation did not reach the most distant slave states until two and one-half years later, being read in Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865. And whereas the day of respect and remembrance called Juneteenth, a combination of the words June and 19th, is observed as an important day in our nation's history. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates African American freedom while also serving as a reminder of the inequities faced by African Americans throughout our nation's history. And whereas El Segundo recognizes that a diverse community founded on shared values and community spirit is our strength and opportunity for the future. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023, as Juneteenth Celebration Day and urge all citizens to celebrate our diversity, to recognize the strength of a rich culture and experience, the African American heritage. This celebration acknowledges the history of an important part of American society and helps unify our city and our nation as a whole. And we have accepting this proclamation here, Tanya Taylor, who is with the community member arts and cultural advisory committee. Are you here? Would you mind stepping up? Can you just tell us about the celebration that we have too?
Yes, and we are so grateful that this year we will be hosting the first official Juneteenth celebration here in El Segundo. This is a monumental occasion. It's an absolutely beautiful occasion. Since 2021, President Biden has made Juneteenth a federal holiday. So we're very proud that our city is acknowledging Juneteenth and we're moving forward to a future that is more equitable, inclusive, and accepts diversity.
And date and time and place so everyone knows.
So the actual festival, the fun part, that will be on Monday, the 19th of June. It will start at 12:00 PM until 6:00 PM. We have performers in both music, dance, arts. We have vendors, we have food, we have a kids zone. It's going to be a very joyous celebration. And I hope that you will all be there to join us in celebrating and not just celebrating the freedoms which were fought so hard for to end slavery, but also for the freedoms that we take for granted today. A lot of these freedoms will be celebrated on Juneteenth, going from the African American freedom, but also the freedom that we share as a community.
Great, thank you. Do you want to get a photo with the? Right up there front. Photo guy? Here we go, one, two, and a couple more, and one more. Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Pierstik, over to you.
All right, so I have another proclamation. This is where the city of El Segundo cherishes the value and dignity of each person and recognizes and appreciates the importance of and respect equality and freedom. And whereas all are welcomed in the city of El Segundo to live, work, and play, and every individual and family deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends, neighbors, and community leaders. And whereas the city of El Segundo denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community has worked tirelessly for respect and equality and continues to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. And whereas Pride Month began in June of 1969 on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after LGBTQ plus and allied friends rose up and fought against harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas the city of El Segundo celebrates and appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contribution of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus community, which strengthens our social welfare. And whereas it is imperative that people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender, identity, and gender expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. Now therefore, on this 6th date of June 2023, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in El Segundo and encourage all residents to celebrate the progress towards justice, equality, and liberty in the LGBTQ plus community and join us in the fights that remain to be won. The city council of the city of El Segundo further calls upon residents, employees of El Segundo to observe June 2023 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in honor of our LGBTQ plus residents, employees, visitors, and to the contributions they continue to make to our community. And I want to make sure we have been lighting up the water tower for the last, will remain multicolored for two weeks for this month, so in celebration. And I just want to, John Pickhaver, who is on our arts and culture, is going to accept this proclamation, which I want you to come up and say a few words. But this is real important because it's really also important to remember, and I know my sister took my kids on June 15th, in June in 2015, to the Supreme Court steps where they banned, where they struck down the bans on gay marriage. And it's important to realize that was only eight years ago and how important it is we continue to fight for the rights of people. And so, John, if you want to come up and say a few words and then...
Thank you, members of council, city staff, in particular Public Works Director Elias Sassan and his team, who did an excellent job lighting the water tower for Pride this year. Thank you, sir. It means a lot to me to be here accepting this proclamation. I myself didn't come out until I was 25 years old. I'm 33 now. That means I spent most of my life wondering if I would ever have the courage to be who I really was, which is a little crazy for me to think about because tonight I'm here with my boyfriend Sean of six years, making it hard to imagine forcing myself to have lived another life after reflecting on the one that I've built with him. A year after coming out to family and friends, I came out in a more public way by writing an article for the website Out Sports in the wake of the mass shooting at a gay nightclub in Orlando where 49 people were killed and 50 others were wounded. I wrote that visibility now more than ever is important for our LGBT community. And while I believe that was true then, I think it's even truer today, especially with the increasing in tax on the transgender community. These days, you don't need to go into a nightclub guns blazing to erase people from being who they are. You just need a fear campaign of misinformation and a majority of votes in your state legislator. I read that today there had been 76 anti-LGBTQ plus bills signed into law across this country this year alone. For the first time in 40 years, the Human Rights Campaign declared a state of emergency for LGBTQ plus people in the United States. Here in California, we don't have to worry about these types of laws at the state level. But that same hate, same bigotry, same ignorance that guides those decisions, a little bit of it exists everywhere. And sometimes a little bit is enough to cause a lot of pain. That's why the city of El Segundo issuing a proclamation for Pride is so important. It shows we are a city who does not tolerate hate, that we are a community that champions people from all walks of life. Here queer folks are welcome, loved, and in this month in particular, celebrated. Though, let's be honest, in a community of 17,000 residents, city council meeting viewership ratings aren't so great. Don't get me wrong, I watch you guys all the time. With the writer's strike ongoing, I think it's some of the best TV we have right now. I can't wait to see what happens next. My point is, there will be many people who will never even know that this proclamation happened. That's why illuminating the water tower in rainbow lights for all to see is such a powerful and beautiful action. It's a beacon of light shining brightly 100-plus feet in the sky for a community who for so long has been relegated to the dark. And tonight, I want to challenge you to build on that. Find more ways to bring the LGBTQ plus community and its allies together here in town. Maybe next year, hold a water tower lighting ceremony at Hilltop Park, pass a flag ordinance and raise a Pride flag. Maybe there's still time to act this year. Redondo Beach passed a new flag ordinance just last week and then planned a Pride raising, excuse me, Pride flag raising ceremony that's happening right now. Whatever hesitation you have about doing an event like that, I ask that you simply move past it. I feel like there's a concern that if you do something for one group, it would be unfair or impossible to celebrate all other groups. This slippery slope, this where does it end type of thinking comes off like an excuse for inaction. If there's another group facing a state of emergency right now simply for existing, then yeah, by all means, let's find a time to do a city-sponsored event for them too. I implore you to stop worrying about the reaction you may get from a few for doing some type of event and think of the reactions that you will never see if you don't do it. The kids who like me, that may find themselves saying again and again, hmm, maybe I'll come out next year. Plus, I'm sure you know, support for events like this very much exists. Just the other day, someone posted a photo of the water tower lit up in Rainbow in one of the community Facebook groups. Got almost 400 likes. I think the last time a post that had that much positive interaction was back in 2020 when Lucky, the stolen dog, was returned to its owner. Look, don't get me wrong, we've made measurable and meaningful progress on these issues and others in the last couple of years. This proclamation, the lighting of the water tower are both representative of that, and I thank you for doing so. But this kind of work, it never stops. So please, let's build on it together. Until then, I want to take one last moment to shine a light on a good friend of mine, Wallace McGuire. Wally lives here in town, he's a husband, a father of two, and a fun and gentle, effortlessly cool person. He also happens to be a trans man. And right now, it's the T in LGBTQ that needs our support most. So I want to accept this proclamation with my friend Wally, and I want to invite him up to share a few words if he'd like. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wallace McGuire. I moved here with my family, my husband and my two children, about five years ago. And I just wanted to say that I'm so grateful to be living in this community where I can feel safe with my family, my children can feel safe. And things like having the water tower lit are so meaningful. And I don't think I can ever express what it means to see stuff like that and to be here today and to just feel like, you know, this is my home. Thank you so much.
All right, a couple of photos here. Here we go. Look at the camera, please. One more, and one more. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all very much. Now is the time for public communications. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone here for public comments?
We do. First up is Monica Davis.
We will confine the period to 30 minutes. Each communicator will have five minutes to speak.
Hello, I'm Monica, and I have been here before, supporting the habitat restoration for the El Segundo Blue Butterfly. I am here to let you know and let the broader community know that the butterflies will be out in July, early July, probably for the whole month of July. I am, over Facebook, I have offered three educational tours of the blue butterflies. I want to invite you to them. I will be meeting on July 6th, which is a Thursday, July 9th, which is a Sunday for weekend people, and July 12th. All of those meeting times will be from 10 to 12 because the butterflies don't come out till it's a little warmer. And I would be showing you one of the last remaining natural habitats for El Segundo Blue Butterflies down at Dockweiler Beach, or not Dockweiler, where the Dockweiler Youth Center is. Across from the Hyperion, there's that big parking lot. It is a paid parking lot, so some people might want to come by bike or some walk or whatever. But in the northwest corner, I will be there. I will explain the life cycle, habitat, and the need for habitat restoration and show people the butterflies. So I want to invite the community and city council for those purposes. Thank you.
Monica, how do people get in touch with you?
The best way is Facebook. I posted it both on the El Segundo Parent Network, the community network, and the Native Plant Network. I have an email. Do I, should I give it out over the?
We can have it entered into the rec, into the minutes.
Sure.
If you want to give it to the clerk.
Monica W. Davis at gmail dot com. Very simple.
And I know, Monica, there was talk with the environmental committee to see if there's public land where we could plant some of the buckwheat. And I know as Tracy was going around the town looking for areas where we could actually try to plant some of this.
I have gone with a tour with the head of the Parks and Rec.
Okay.
And there's lots of places. We need to do a campaign within the city to raise money for plants. But we have identified some areas along Imperial, some big stretches, so that there would be a substantial habitat. But also along Washington Park, that area, and other smaller places throughout the city. I would love also to work with Parks and Rec and the community to see, there's a lot of parkways in the front that are not planted and not irrigated. And if we can get funds and a committee together to bring in some funding for plants. And we're partnering with, hopefully we're partnering with Palos Verdes Peninsula Land Conservancy, PVPLC, to acquire the appropriate edemic plants for this specific area.
Yeah, so I'm sure Ali and we'll be in touch and we'll figure something out. But thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Rebecca Carr.
Welcome, Miss Carr.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Carr, and I've lived in El Segundo about 14 years now. I met my husband surfing down at El Porto, and we have three kids now, and I really love living here. It's a great town. My oldest just turned 13, and I live on Eucalyptus, right near the high school, and I see kids all the time, and I really love kids. I've loved kids a long time. When I was in high school and I graduated, I spent my summer as a lifeguard at a Girl Scout camp and really had fun with the kids. In college, I got a degree in psychology and had a child emphasis because I was going to be a psychiatrist for children, at which point, after getting my child emphasis, I realized it would be a bit difficult for me to work with the kids with difficulties and keep an emotional distance from it because of my personality. So I went and got a master's in architecture instead. But I have been blessed with three kids of my own. My littlest is over there, that's Annie. And I also have a math lab at my house. On the Parents Network one time, they said, oh, I thought it said meth lab. And I go, no, no, not a meth lab, it's a math lab. I just had it today and raced over here, and I just love being with the kids. Mr. Nichols, who teaches at the high school, runs it, and I offer my house. And they have a fun time learning math. I know a lot of kids at high school, and I think that, when I take my kids to the doctor, my doctor said that, their pediatrician said that the anxiety rates among children are higher than ever, that children's cortisol is off the charts. They've never seen these rates of anxiety and problems so early, as in this generation. And I want to do something about it here in El Segundo. So I started a program called Friday Night Light for the kids, just to give them something fun to do after school. We launched two events. We had the Good Pizza Nando brought over all this food for them. Pasta, salad, spaghetti pizza. We had a DJ. And I want to provide a place for them to go just to have some fun together, to get food, music, and hopefully some games going because they did seem that they needed something to do rather than just stand around and listen to music. I know as adults like that, but they seemed like they wanted to be busy. So we launched two events, and they had a lot of fun. Some of the kids said, you mean it's free? And I go, yeah, it's going to be free. Well, what do you mean? How much is the food? It's free. They just couldn't believe that we were doing something just for them, just for the teenagers. That was completely free. And right now, I don't want it to, I don't want to affiliate it with an entity or organization. I'd like to, I wrote the Kiwanis Club also contacting the chamber. And I'd love to involve organizations in town to get involved so we could get a bigger band, you know, have more fun. Maybe get a cornhole or, I don't know, I talked with one of the teenagers at my math lab, and she goes, corn what? I don't think so. She goes, how about a donut eating contest? And you hang a donut on a string. I don't know, I'm trying to reach out to kids and see what they would enjoy. But right now, the sound permit fee and the park fee to do it in Library Park costs $75 every half hour. And if I do one and a half hours plus a setup and the teardown, if we have music, that's running up. And then the sound permit fee is $150. And I was told by one of the, Hank Lou said, why don't you go present to the council and see if it can be an event series? And they could possibly waive the permit fees because right now my husband and I are paying those. I'm happy to pay those. But I'd like to spend the money getting a bigger band and maybe some activities for the kids. I've given my email to the, on the card. I don't know if I need to say it. I know you guys don't make decisions today. I have some flyers. If you'd like a fun flyer, I could pass them out. Does anyone want a flyer?
I think if you give them to the clerk, she'll distribute them.
Okay, sure thing. Just one? Just one?
If you'd like, yeah.
And then we, we also have a speaker. We had a speaker for just 10 to 15 minutes, just to talk to the kids about good anything, motivation. That's it. Okay, so, love to have the fees waived.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
Thank you.
Next up, David. I don't want to mess up your line.
Hello, I'm David Buggan. I've been a community member for 25 years and participated a lot. And one of the things I've participated in is the pool, the new Weisburn Pool, and I went to the plunge for 10, almost 10 years. And there's something going on over there that really bothers me. They've got a class for, a senior exercise class, which always went on, but the lady that's teaching it has a boombox that's like this big, plays it so loud it's deafening. I've spoken with everybody over there. Nobody seems to know how to deal with it. But my real concern is not only is it deafening to me and other people, but the biggest thing is the safety factor. There is no way at all that anybody having a problem drowning or breathing or something could be heard over that music. No way. You know, even if we were in a lane next to them, you might not hear them because of that music. Now, I don't think the class should be stopped, but I think that person needs to be made to turn the music way down. When I took the classes years ago, which I don't now, I do my own thing, but the teacher then did play music on a little teeny boombox, and it was background, and you could hear her speak. The lady that teaches it now, not only is it so loud you can't hear it, but she screams over it, and it's just screaming, you can't hear one thing she says. Anyway, I think you should look into it because if somebody drowns while that's going on, it's going to be one giant liability suit. So I hope you do something. Beyond that, I love the community that does so much good. We've already heard so much just tonight, and I appreciate all of it and the way it's been run. I, you know, I've never come here and complained about anything in all the years I've been doing it, but I thought this was really important, not only for me, but everybody else in that pool. So I hope there's some way, some angle you can take to help rectify that. I think it's very important.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Jay, you're up next.
That's right. Come on, Tracy. It's okay. Good evening, Mayor Protem, city council members. I'm Jay Heschler, and I live on Oak Avenue. And I'd like to just spend a couple of minutes talking about some pedestrian safety. First of all, I'm so proud of our town since COVID. There's, I see so many more people walking. I see people riding bikes, people out of their cars. It's, it's really, it's encouraging, it's exciting, but I've also seen some issues where we've, we've had some problems. I live on Oak Avenue, kind of near Main Street, and that is the northern boundary of the high school. Since my wife and I have lived on Oak Avenue, I think we've seen or heard of four or five pedestrian accidents, people actually getting hit by cars in that crosswalk. It's right next to the school. It is, you know, cars are, it's 35 miles an hour, but, you know, cars are going 40, 45, 50, and
25 miles an hour.
I'm sorry?
It's 25.
Okay, well, then it's even worse then. Cars go way too fast. I think others have come before you to consider putting a stop sign at Oak Street and, and Main, and I'd like to really have you consider that. I don't think it would impede the flow on Main Street at all. It's at our high school, kids are coming out of there all the time, and, you know, one accident is too, too many, is one too many. So having four or five in, in 10 years is, is unacceptable. So I'd love you guys to consider that with Public Works and see if, see if you can make that happen. The other thing I want to talk about is El Segundo Boulevard. It's recently been repaved and restriped, and it's lovely. It's nice, they, you know, Elias, great job with your, your team on that. But I don't think the job is complete yet. So it's been striped ever since the parking, the parking program went away, the prototype program. That Boulevard, El Segundo Boulevard on the north side, used to have stripes that were almost as wide as a car, and they, they indicated turn lanes, if you recall the original striping there. The sidewalks on El Segundo Boulevard are extremely narrow. There's only one sidewalk on one side, the Chevron side doesn't have a sidewalk, it's very tight. And so, but now that the new striping is on the ground, the lanes are actually wider because that one, the, the, the prototype striping went away, so now all the lanes are wider. Does anybody know what happens when, when lanes, traffic lanes are wider? Cars go faster. Exactly. So now that one's not 25, that one's 35, I believe. You know, people go 60 on that thing. So in 2011, the city of El Segundo became a signatory of what, something called the South Bay Bike Master Plan. We've been talking about it for a long time. El Segundo Boulevard has always been designated as a, a potential Class II bike lane. Class II bike lane means painted stripes on either side, it's not a, a big lift on infrastructure, but it's always been designated as a major bike thoroughfare. I see people riding bikes there all the time, and it scares the hell out of me. There's, and I, and I'm a cyclist. There is room on that road right now to put a three-foot stripe, paint a stripe on both sides. It will bring the, the perception that the lanes are smaller for cars, and it'll slow people down, and it'll give them a visual cue that bikes are allowed on this road. By the way, bicycles are allowed on every road in America with the exception of freeways. And so bikes have a right to be there. It would be a big, important thing to finish the striping job and just put two white stripes down either side as a designated bike lane. So again, for the kids, for the cyclists, for the pedestrians on, on that road, there's a, there's a bike shop on El Segundo Boulevard now, and I'm surprised that they're not here standing next to me asking for the same thing. So I'd love you guys to consider finishing the job and, and just putting a little more paint on the ground. So thank you very much.
Mr. Heschler, stick around for item 14.
Okay.
The local travel network.
All right. Thank you very much.
No pressure, Mr. Legere, no pressure at all.
Let him do it.
We will yield, the yield time, does he have any save time on there? Yeah, go right ahead, please be brief.
The other part of that exact thing I noticed is by moving the lanes out to the curb, all the buildings on that street are built right out to the narrow sidewalks. So when you come out onto El Segundo Boulevard, you cannot see the oncoming, the cars coming close to you. Now that they narrowed it, it's even way worse because where my building is and you go out, it's, it was always tough, but now there's going to be, I guarantee, double or triple the accidents of people hitting cars trying to get onto El Segundo. If you widened with the car lane, it would also make it possible to pull out so you can see the cars coming. In fact, I have a call-in to the manager for that already, but it's a huge factor. It just, you know, they just finished it, so I just started observing it the last week.
Thank you, sir.
The comments I have now are, public communication I have now are for the public hearing.
Very well. City Manager, would you mind addressing, one, the park issue, perhaps referring Ms. Carr to wrecking parks for the wavering process on fees? Also, that's the second time I think we've heard about issues with that aerobics. So perhaps that's, you don't need to address that, but, but perhaps afterward. And Public Works on the effects of the striping pilot program, if that has any effect on the turnouts? Because I think those turnouts, there was some striping that will affect the turnouts onto El Segundo Boulevard. Perhaps we can elaborate on that for the commenter before, did Mr. Heschler, oh, he's right there. City Manager, at your discretion.
Yes, no, I appreciate that, Mayor Protem. Yes, I've got notes here on the butterfly habitat, the potential fee, consideration of fee waves for the child's, kids' event, and then the senior exercise class. I will speak with Recreation, Parks and Library Director, Ali Mancini, about those three items. And then as, as for the potential stop sign at Oak Street and Main, as well as the, the bike conversation from the recent speaker on El Segundo Boulevard, we'll, we'll share that with Mr. Elias soon. I mean, unless Elias, you've got any comments?
Well, I was just suggesting, because they were talking about the lane width, but that lane width will be affected by the striping pilot program, so it may be worth a, a 10-second addressing to
Sure.
show that that work is in fact not done because there's sort of a second phase.
Basically, I think the speaker talked about the, the striping, the pilot project that added parallel parking along El Segundo, and that was taken out because it really posed a lot of issues and a lot of vehicular traffic could not see the oncoming traffic. And that, that pilot project was, was, if you would, it, it, it didn't work out and remove that, that striping that allowed parallel parking. Now, with respect to the bike lane, I'd be more than happy to go back and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, would, would we make those lanes one-way north-south to allow that diagonal parking? Some of those offsets create a turnout, correct? There is, you step back the turning, so if you're making a, if you're, let's say you are southbound, and you are turning west onto El Segundo Boulevard, you will not be making that turn directly. There, there is space created for visibility because you are not directly abutting the side of the road, correct?
You're referring to the Smoky Hollow?
So the Smoky Hollow
Yeah.
Parking Pilot Project.
Yes, that is correct. But I think his comments had to do with the striping along El Segundo and the pilot project.
Yeah, but I'm just talking about in terms of how those, how that traffic interaction plays on. It, it, it could be worth taking offline instead of parsing out here without a map and a chart.
Yeah. You're, you're correct. And, and one comment I'd like to make, the existing sidewalks are narrow is because simply we do not have enough right-of-way. I wish we had more right-of-way, but providing wider sidewalks would require acquisition of right-of-way, and, and a lot of those buildings are, are too close to the right-of-way line too. But I'd be glad to work with CAGA, and that's South, South Bay Cities Council of Government regarding the bike lane, and see, look at the back situation and, and restriping El Segundo for, for allowing back lanes.
Very well. And it's important to note that that road was created, that road was repaved with whose money? With state and county money, not our city money. Bringing those tax dollars back home. City Manager, would you like to address Hyperion updates?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Thank you. And yes, as I do every council meeting, now probably for the last six months, seven months even, I've provided during this time an update on all things Hyperion. So I do have a few comments this evening. As for the legislation, as you are aware, on May 18th, Bill AB 1216 passed the Assembly floor vote, and this is the bill coming out of Assembly Member Al Marasucci's office. The bill is now in the Senate and is scheduled to be heard at the Senate Environmental Quality Committee meeting on Wednesday, June 21st. We just heard that today, in fact. So things are moving quite well. I don't want to jinx it, but things are moving along. Feeling, feeling good about getting this bill passed. Hopefully, I mean, the best of all possible worlds, it gets passed sometime or signed this, this fall. Another pretty significant item, a letter that we were CC'd on came last week, and this was six weeks after the city's joint, our joint meeting to discuss Hyperion. Senator Ben Allen's office issued a joint letter to the Director and General Manager of LA Sanitation, Ms. Barbara Romero, as you know, regarding the ongoing nuisance and health-related impacts to the people residing near Hyperion. The letter specifically states that this situation is untenable and strongly urges expedited odor mitigation efforts, expanded fence line monitoring for more than hydrogen sulfide, and improved communication to the community. And significantly, the letter was signed not only by Senator Allen, but also Congressman Ted Lieu, Assembly Member Marasucci, and also Los Angeles County Supervisor Holly Mitchell. So really, the four key branches of, of government, local and state, signed this letter. So a pretty powerful letter, which really demonstrates their commitment and support, which we're extremely grateful for. And I, I, I do believe that with your input, your, your direction, as well as staff's tireless advocacy for El Segundo residents and businesses, our concerns are being heard and acted on. So we're very pleased to be CC'd on this letter. Finally, as it relates to AQMD, the Air Quality Management District, at their June 1st board hearing with Hyperion regarding the flares, I know there was an article just yesterday in the front page article in the Daily Breeze, AQMD issued new conditions requiring Hyperion to install new flares in full compliance with AQMD requirements. AQMD anticipates will take, unfortunately, nine years to complete the new flares, a very significant, very, hundreds of millions of dollars costly, cost of an effort like this. But that was in the, in the, that came out of the board hearing. In addition, there were 57 odor complaints that were received. Since May 23rd, AQMD inspectors responded to all of these complaints, but did not confirm any public nuisance violations. The next AQMD hearing of the board is scheduled for 9:00 AM on June 20th, and the agenda for this hearing is posted on the city's website. So that's my report. I also, though, have the pleasure of, if you recall, a couple of months ago, staff, the city retained an environmental expert, Dr. Michael Stenstrom, who actually chaired the, the ad hoc committee report that was a result of the, the major spill now almost two years ago. And Dr. Stenstrom is here this evening with us to share a few comments, if, if you'd like. And with that, I would like to introduce Dr. Michael Stenstrom.
Thank you very much, Darrell. So this is my second appearance here. I'm a professor at UCLA in the Civil and Environmental Department, and my specialty is water pollution control, treatment plants, and so forth. So Darrell and Elias asked me to give you a little report on what I've been doing, and I was involved in AB 1211, 1216 writing, and I think my contribution was to make sure that its requirements were manageable so that people couldn't, agencies couldn't just object to it as, as impractical. So I'm pleased to see that's moving forward. Another job I have is reviewing the reports from Hyperion on the progress of the repairs and the 34 recommendations we made. So that report's gone from about three pages to 23 pages. There's a lot of activity there. And I'm pleased to see that some of the recommendations have been worked on and completed, those that are most acute, such as level alarms and duplications of certain things. There's other long-term recommendations, such as recontouring some of the roads, so that if there is a flood in the future, it doesn't flood out the tunnels, it goes somewhere else. And so I've been doing that. The report actually goes to Elias, but I get copies of it. One of the things that's been progressing are the primary covers, the primary tank covers. Primary clarification is a process that's pretty much standard at all treatment plants. It, it's settling. Things settle out, and because there's no aeration, no oxygen, it's an odor-producing process. And for that reason, the tanks are usually covered. And the covers are connected, the underpart is connected to some sort of vacuum system that goes to a treatment. And if you look at Hyperion, you can see some tall columns with sort of narrowing at the top, and those are odor treatment devices. So if the cover is functional and not leaking, the foul, foul air can go through the treatment system. But if the covers are imperfect and leaking, then some of them can escape. And they've been replacing their covers. They, the report I just read, which just came today, indicated that they had completed one set of that they had completed one set of clarifiers, there are four batteries, and that they were going to start on the next one. My own curiosity is why it's all being done now. I was wondering why it hadn't been phased along. But anyway, that's progressing, and people have wondered why it takes so long. But the covers are sort of custom-built. They're long strips set next to each other, so that they can be lifted and moved. So, another thing I've been doing, and it's because I know something of the Bureau or LA SAN, and that is that it's one of the largest. The people that work there tend to think that they're the beginning and the end of wastewater treatment, but they're not. They're just one of many. And I've asked in those 34 recommendations for their staff to attend conferences on collection systems, to improve their knowledge of collection systems. And it's a technology that was static for a long time, but now it's becoming very active, especially in places like Los Angeles, where water conservation is reducing the flow of wastewater. And sewers are designed for a certain capacity, and if you don't have that capacity, you can get accumulation of solids. So, if you get a big rainfall, those solids can get washed into the plant. And that's one thing that the Hyperion staff thought might have happened earlier, although that's not the reason. So, I've been recommending to Tracy that she send people. It's something they probably don't want to do, because it's involving out-of-state travel and budget and so forth, and people have to be away from work. But I intend to follow up on that, so that we have some national experts within our regional facility. So, towards the last thing I'm going to say here is that I've asked the staff to let me tour some of the repairs they're making. I want to see them. And they've agreed to do that. I have to give them some times. And I met with the Environmental Committee on Thursday at noon, and they asked to join a tour as well. So, I will set that up for them. So, that's all I intend to say. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Stenstrom. Questions?
I just have one question. So, on the covers, there was two components. There was the temporary covers, and then the permanent covers. And I know when Ryan and I toured it many months ago, they had already completed one, so I'm surprised that the second one isn't done now as well. So, if we could just push or find out what's the delay, I mean, we've been hearing the same answer for quite a while, many months, and then they were supposed to give us an answer on what the temporary covers were going to be, and we still have not heard that answer. So, I appreciate that they're moving forward. And then the other thing we had asked is that they would institute a long-term plan for replacement covers rotation. And I just want to make sure that we're not sitting here five years from now, still talking about these covers.
Yeah. Well, I was a little surprised that they're replacing them all at the same time, because usually, there would be a phased replacement that would spread out the work over time. But I'll be sure to ask those questions.
Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Stenstrom. City Manager, anything further on the comments?
The only comment is, if you could, if the council would consider moving Item 13 under staff for the establishment of an aquatics manager classification?
We'll take that up after the procedural motions, City Manager. Robert Rules of Order probation.
All right, sorry about that.
I'll make a motion.
Madam Clerk, buzz him with that. First, procedural motions. Do I have a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions by agenda and title only?
Baldino, so moves.
Per Seck, second.
We'll take a roll call vote, as we have a remote caller.
Councilmember Baldino?
Aye.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Persek?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes. And do I have consensus to move Item 13 ahead of the public hearing, Item 12?
Yes.
Yes, I believe we have consensus. That's three of us. All right, with that, consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, or are there any polls?
No polls.
Per Seck, so moved.
Baldino, second.
Councilmember Giroux, do you have any polls on consent?
No, I do not.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Baldino?
Aye.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Persek?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Passes for him.
Fantastic. Moving right along to Item 13, establish the aquatics manager classification and adopt a classification specification, examination plan, and basic salary range. Director Reddick, will you present?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. This item tonight is to create an aquatics manager position full-time. We have three aquatics facilities in the city, and with the Plunge reopening project coming up, and the amount of staff that are employed at the Aquatics Center, there's over 100 part-time staff, we feel that it's necessary to devote more resources to the aquatics facilities. And with that would be the creation of a full-time aquatics manager. Currently, we have a Recreation Superintendent who oversees recreation programs, but she also oversees the aquatics facility. But the aquatics facility combined is larger than all the other divisions that she oversees. So, we feel that it's necessary to devote more resources and to be able to get the plunge opened. And Director Mancini can speak to the specifics, if you have other questions.
I have one question. Is this an additive or just a reclassification?
This is an add of a full-time position.
Okay.
Yes.
And one of the things that we had talked about, especially for the Aquatics Center, is look for partnerships and for potential revenue by partnerships with, you know, with clubs or events. And so, this person would actually help us ascertain some of those partnerships, right?
Yes.
Or develop, I should say, develop those partnerships.
I think, I think my answer.
There he is.
Councilmember Giroux, questions or comments?
Yes, obviously, I think this is kind of the follow-up to one of the discussions we had recently about, okay, now that we're going to have all these pools, we really need to look for someone who has a skill set to be able to help us manage that, be it through programming, through following a business plan, through being able to further promote what we have as a community in pools. So, the call-out I have for you, Ali and Rebecca, is this is going to require a pretty specific skill set, and I don't, I don't think it's going to be necessarily easy to find it, because this is not just a matter of hiring someone who's run a community pool before. This is going to require someone who understands really what we're trying to do, understands the business behind us, as well as has some experience in reaching out to, whether it be USA Swimming, USA Water Polo, CIF events, you know. So, this is a pretty encompassing position, and I think it's going to be important to have a group of people who understand what that job description should look like, and who the right person is for that job. Have we gotten that far on that yet, or are we just looking right now to say, hey, we need approval to go ahead and start looking for this?
No, I would say that's in the, that's actually not, it's distinctly not in the skills required, right? It's heavy on pool and lifeguard, if I recall. There's not a commercial application listed, I don't think.
And I think that's problematic.
So, we can, we can update the draft job description. This position is unrepresented. It would be placed in the management and confidential group, and with that, we can update it. There is no meet-and-confer process to do so. But we're definitely open to feedback and suggestions for adding different essential duties to the description.
I mean, just to kind of land the point of my comments on there, as we talked about, you know, we're looking at potentially having $30-plus million worth of pools. And we need someone who understands how to run $30 million worth of pools. And I don't know if $139,000 is going to get us there. I think we're going to have to need, we're going to need someone who has a very specific skill set in order to accomplish what we're trying to look for. So, I would definitely look at adding that, when you, and then take that into consideration when we're hiring.
We'll definitely take your feedback and update the job description to reflect that.
Councilmember Baldino?
Oh, I would, I would agree with Giroux on this one. We are putting a lot of our capital improvements into pools, and, you know, this was sold to us as a slam-bang moneymaker, and we're going to have events and sell out all these hotels. Hasn't turned out that way, but there's still potential at that pool to make it better. So, I go along with Councilmember Giroux's recommendation of adding what he described as this type of marketing, and also a higher level of management to the job description.
Yeah, and just to add to that and to Councilmember Giroux's comments, I think this is something, too. We can have the Aquatics Subcommittee give us some good feedback on some of those specific skills that we're talking about in relation to the business plan, because I agree with you, we're not just looking at someone who knows how to oversee lifeguards. We're looking at bringing in partnerships, sponsors, donors, a business plan, revenue generation. So, we will definitely add some of those things to this, and we will talk with the Aquatics Subcommittee and get their feedback as well.
I think referring it to the Subcommittee is a good way to take care of it. Councilmember Pierce, do you have anything?
No, I'm aligned to that. That's why I wanted to ask what, why I asked the question, is this part, is this to find some, is this person going to be helping us develop those relationships?
Yes, absolutely.
I think you see the direction that we're all heading on this, that I, for one, don't care if this person's ever been to a pool. I don't. Find me someone who's a concert promoter, you know, who's going to go around and have the junior championships of whatever here, and I'm totally fine with it. So, I would just be careful that this doesn't get scrubbed into the total aquatics world of zinc noses and flip-flops, and let's get somebody who gets that thing rented out and churning money, because right now, it's just sucking money.
Some pool experience would be nice. Just playing devil's advocate, just throw it out there.
They need to know how to swim.
I beg to differ, but with, not necessarily, right? I mean, you know, the Beatles were brought to the Hollywood Bowl by someone who never played an instrument, and that seemed to work out.
Do you need a formal motion?
With that in mind, we'll have to have a motion to approve the qualification, the classification, the salary range, the appropriation. Can we bundle all of those into one big motion?
Um, if we can, then the resolution will be ready.
Very well. So, Items 1, 2, and 4, do I have anyone who would like to move approval?
Let me, let me ask. If we're going to send this to the Aquatics Center and they drastically change it, are they going to have to come back?
No.
Okay. Once we tell you, we want the Aquatics Center to fine-tune it, you don't need to come back?
The only reason we would have to come back is if you wanted to have a different salary, which requires a resolution for CalPERS purposes.
Okay. Can I just ask that we be back briefed on the job qualifications that we're going to post for? We don't have, we don't have to approve it, but obviously, there's going to be some tweaking to that.
Sure.
Very well.
Yeah, we can do that, and then I think we can run the recruitment, and if we have issue with the salary, then maybe we would come back and have more discussion.
We can certainly do that.
Very well. Well, do we have a motion for Items 1, 2, and 4?
Per Seck, so moved.
Baldino, second.
Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Baldino?
Aye.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Persek?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
4-0 passes. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, but I am going to have to excuse myself out of the rest of this. I have work here in New York.
Do we need him for the resolution?
I appreciate it.
Can you wait one second while the Deputy City Attorney reads the resolution?
Oh, I can do that.
There we go.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Resolution establishing basic monthly salary range for full-time job classification is before the council for consideration.
Do we need someone to enter that?
Uh, you can see a motion.
Do we have a motion for the entrance?
Per Seck, so moved.
Baldino, second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Baldino?
Aye.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Persek?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
All right, 4-0 passes.
Very well. Thank you, Councilmember Giroux. And, oh, they fled on foot. Wreckin' Parks boogied. All right. We'll move back to Item 12, a public hearing. There's a time and place here to fix for a public hearing for adopting a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2023 and '24 citywide operating budget, capital improvement program budget, and GAN appropriations limit. City Manager, pardon, City Clerk, was a proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner.
Yes, it was.
City Clerk, has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
No, sir.
The public hearing is now open. Mr. George, who will make the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Our finance staff, Dino Marasucci and Vicky Cowell will be making that presentation, but I would like to open up the presentation, just a few comments, mostly just to thank the council, management, entire staff, and all the departments who really have worked diligently on this budget for several, several months, probably the beginning of this calendar year. We had two public meetings, upwards of 20 interdepartmental meetings over these several months. And as you know, we had a budget study session conducted on April 17th, where we went into all the details of the budget over maybe four or five hours. So, again, I want to thank everyone. I want to especially thank our former Finance Director, Joe Lilio, who stayed with us before taking his new position to help finish up the budget. Appreciate Joe's efforts on that. And then, really, you know, I've worked on several budgets in many cities. This is a highly ambitious budget, lots of items to continue the quality of life here in El Segundo, crossing all departments, not only with the general fund, but the capital improvement budget you'll see, or you have seen also, is a very exciting capital budget with many projects that have been longstanding, that we feel confident about moving forward with this next fiscal year. And in fact, upwards of almost $18, $19 million of capital improvement dollars have been set aside, carried over for these implementation of these projects. I think roughly 19 bricks and mortar projects in particular, including two projects we've set aside dollars for with the Plunge, and the Plunge improvement, which you've heard about, and then also the Recreation Park renovation, which you're very well aware of, and will be coming throughout the course of the next budget year with updates and designs, and hopefully ultimately leading to an awarding of a contract for construction. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dino to kick things off, and then I'll go over to Vicky to also participate in the budget discussion. Dino?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of City Council. Tonight, we present and ask for your adoption of the proposed fiscal year 23, '24 budget. Okay, there we go. So, as we just had the City Manager's introduction, I will go over the revenues, and then Vicky Cowell, our Finance Manager, will cover the appropriations. So, looking at this slide, the original fiscal year 23 budget was $81.7 million, but you can see we're ending up at about $88.5. Projected for fiscal year 24, the $88.2 million is slightly below where we expect fiscal year 23 to finish, but it is much higher, $6.6 million higher than the original fiscal year 23 budgeted numbers. Just that this year came in quite a bit higher. Some of the things that make that up, line 2 for business license, fiscal year 24, we have Measure BT, the new business license tax program, goes into effect for calendar year 24 renewals, and that starts in December of '23 when we send out the renewal notices. On line 5 for Chevron, you know, we do show a slight decrease in the TRA, that's the final resolution payment. But we have to remember, the total fiscal year 23 Chevron was $14.5 million, which is about 16% to 17% of the general fund. The reason that's dropping down a little is because Chevron's COGEN and UUT payments have increased. So, it's a part of the... have increased, so it's a part of the net sum total of the total TRA. Line six and nine for UUT and franchise tax. The fiscal year '23 was exceptionally high due to the high natural gas prices that we had earlier this year, so we're anticipating those rates, the price of the natural gas to go down. We worked with our consultants and took the middle estimate of where we think revenues in gas prices will be for next year for that. And let's see, line eight, the transfers in, the decrease there was the approximately $2 million in ARPA funds that we received in fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23, and we no longer have any funds coming from there. Other revenues is mainly allocations to other administrative charges for other departments and some other miscellaneous revenue. For Top Golf, you can see, you've seen this before, but we have, you know, $1.3 million in the ground lease payment, you know, approximately $900,000 to pension contribution and $300,000 or so to, I'm sorry, almost $400,000 to the repayment of the equipment loan. $200,000 benefit to community benefit dedicated to wreck park capital projects. We still haven't heard from them on the 3% beverage allocation, you know, still expecting at least the minimum of $200,000, and, you know, they still have another month or so before they have to submit that to us. And then also, of course, the $20,000 golf course ground lease, just ground lease dedicated to the general fund. So this chart just shows the diversity of our revenues. You can see number one, sales and use tax is 16.7%, business license 16.2%, TOT 14.4%, property tax is 14.2%, and UUT is 12%. These total 73.5% of our revenues within those top five, so we still have a very good diversity here within the city. You've seen this before as well, the key points, you know, UUT during the pandemic, you can see it dropped, a lot of people working from home, UUT is only on commercial businesses, not on residents, so therefore utility bills were down. But then, as people started returning to the office, you know, we had those higher natural gas prices, you can see we had a significant increase there. And then, of course, TOT after the pandemic has come up almost to where it was before. We're getting better as occupancy and room rates increase closer to pre-pandemic levels. And this here is the proposed revenues for all funds. The key points here, $164 million is a 4.5% over the fiscal year '23 estimated actual numbers, and 16% over what fiscal year '23 was originally budgeted at. General Fund, the largest, at 54%, Enterprise Water Fund at 23, Debt Service at 5.8%, and CIP at 5.1%. Notable changes from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24 would include $7.6 million on line six for CIP transfer from the general fund. Line seven of equipment replacement includes $500,000 towards our new ERP system. Public Safety was that $2 million in ARPA funds that I mentioned before, that program is completed. In line 13, Recreation, we're expecting $1 million more from the Chargers, and that will be released to us upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy, which is expected in April or May of 2024, so it'll be the fourth quarter of the fiscal year before we receive that money. And I will now turn it over to Vicky to go over the appropriations.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Timontel, and the council members. Yeah, my name is Vicky Chum, the Finance Manager, so I'm going to continue on the fiscal year '23, '24 proposed general fund appropriations, which means the expenditures. So the total expenditures for general fund is $96 million. Included in the $96 million, $7.6 million is CIP budget, and the net operating budget is $88 million, which is only 1% increase compared to fiscal year '23 year-end estimate. So number one, Police Department, projected at $21.6 million with a $1 million increase, representing 4.8% increase. That increase is due to the contractual service cost for South Bay Regional Public Communication Authority Dispatch Service and House on Jail contract, and also include $500,000 recruiting for general liability. Line number two, Fire Department, projected at $14 million, with representing 1.2% increase. That increase include the $353,000 for unfreezing the emergency coordinator position under the related operational budget, so $160,000 for salary and benefit, and $192,000 for ONM. So the net ONM for Fire Department is actually is lower than fiscal year '23, with about $400,000 to $500,000 saving. Number three, Transfer Out. The Transfer Out amount increased from $10.3 million to $17.9 million during the budget studies session on April 17th. Council decided to transfer $7.6 million from general fund to CIP fund. Number four, Public Works Department, projected at $8.6 million, representing a 14.6% increase. That is due to the increased cost for government building and infrastructures, utility, Westport Aquatic Center chemical costs, material and supply costs for routine facility maintenance, and also for engineering, the contractual service cost increase. Some contractual, some contractual services are reimbursable or semi-reimbursable, for example inspections, land serving, traffic engineering, and specialized plant check. So the related revenue are also projected into, to increase as well. Number six, Recreation Park and the Library, projected at $10.2 million, representing 17.3% increase. Because services are returning to pre-pandemic status, maintenance for facilities and events restoring after previously deferred due to COVID inflation increases, and there will be personnel cost impact due to the minimum wage increase for part-time employees starting July 1st, 2023. Line number 11, HR Department, increased, projected at $2 million, increased by 27.5% due to executive recruitments, labor negotiations, employee engagement, public safety testing and recruitment, and also employee engagement, $100,000, and also employee training and coaching. Also, HR Department have one new FTE, HR analyst. So do you have any questions on this slide?
Can you go back to the revenues for all funds slide, just for one second?
That one? All funds?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the comparison of revenue and expenditure for general fund. The left side is general fund revenue, projected at $88.3 million, and the right side is expenditure projected at $96 million, but included in the $96 million, $88.3 is operating budget, $7.6 is CIP budget. The general fund expenditure has four major categories. Personnel, personnel cost, $54 million, representing 56%. Operations and maintenance, $24 million, representing 25%. Transfer out, $80 million, representing 19%, and very little for general fund capital only, because the major capital projects are funded by CIP fund through Transfer Out. And the next slide, we'll talk about the details for the Transfer Out. So for personnel costs, we did factor 5% of vacancy rate, which represent about 14 FTE vacancy. So based on city's historical data, city usually have about 11% vacancy rate, representing about 30 FTE vacancy positions. So the $18 million Transfer Out, the first one is the transfer from general fund to solid waste fund, $600,000. The second one is from general fund to CIP fund, per city council's direction from April 17th budget study session for $7.6 million. And the third one is transferred to debt service fund for POB payment, $9.5 million. And the next one is transferred from general fund to senior housing, $200,000, recommended this annual contribution to senior housing CIP reserve dedicated to park vista senior apartment. And Finance projected to have $500,000 for the ERP system, reserve for the new ERP system, since currently city's ERP system is going to retire in 2027, and implementing the new ERP system is a two-year project costing from $2.5 to $3.5 million. Also, we suggest to have a contribution to pension trust for $500,000. So city established pension trust in 2017, and right now the balance is about $4.5 million. City hasn't been, city hasn't funded that since the year 2019. According to PERS latest report, city's pension plan right now is 107% funded, but that didn't include the loss happened to PERS investment in last year. So PERS missed the 6.8% investment target. Actually, the investment return for last year was negative 6.4%. So once PERS issued the new updated report, there is high chance that city will have more pension liability down the road, so staff suggest to make $500,000 contribution to pension trust. Any question for this slide? So the proposed fiscal year '24, '23, '24 operating and capital budget for all fund is $196 million, and included in the $196 million, $162 million is for operating budget, $34 million is for CIP budget. So very similar structure between fiscal year '23 and '24, except the foreign funds, CIP funds. Total is $18.6 million. That include the general fund carryover of $8.2 million, general fund transfer of $7.6 million, and the special revenue fund of $2.8 million, so making total is $18.6 million. And the next one is Equipment Replacement Fund. So for fiscal year '24, we use a different approach to appropriate all the accumulated available balance for Equipment Replacement Fund, which is $18 million. The next one is Public Safety.
Can you, can you explain that a little bit more?
Equipment Replacement Fund?
Yeah, I just, are we reclassifying funds that we had in other places? How did they go from $1 million to $18 million?
So Equipment Replacement Fund, right now, the total balance available fund is $18 million, but we know when, in fiscal year '24, we are now going to have all the equipment replaced, so usually we only appropriate a portion of that.
Yeah.
But that create issues, like we don't know which line item will be replaced. So if department actually have the PO, like for replacement, usually we have the issue of some line we don't have enough appropriation, some line we have too much, so we have to do multiple budget adjustment to adjust the line, because, I mean, we know how, I mean, the total amount, but we don't know how much to apply to each GL account. So this way, we appropriate all the available fund, and then we know department won't replace all the equipment, so whatever left over there will be carried forward to next fiscal year, and next fiscal year, we still use the same approach, we appropriate all the available fund. So that way, we don't have to do multiple budget adjustments.
Okay, so previously, we were just showing that year's appropriations, and now we're showing 100% of appropriatable funds.
Right, right.
Okay, that explains the dramatic, we didn't win something.
Yeah.
I mean, I think most of us have never seen, you know, an eight-digit number attached to a couple of late funds.
But this way, we show exactly how much we have with the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, okay, we're talking about Public Safety.
Can I ask another question before we move on?
Sure.
Is the, within the wastewater fund, are we accounting for returning the $900,000 of improperly collected money to the residents?
That one, I think city attorney will provide more details for that, right?
We are, I mean, we are still holding people's money hostage, right? That's not our money. That's a huge amount of money.
He's talking about the overcharges.
This is the $900,000 that Hyperion overcharged us, that we overcharged residents for wastewater, and it's sitting in that fund.
Yeah, we did, we did receive correct, so.
I know, but when are we going to receive that fund? Because we all paid the city.
What we did is we got credit, we got credit for.
I know the city got credit, but the people who paid the city, their water bill, do not have a credit. So when are we giving them their money back?
I believe when this question was raised last time that Joe was here, he was recommending at the time that that money would stay at the reserve funds for a rainy day, but it's up to city council. If the city council decides to make a reimbursement to the residents, that could be done, but I believe his recommendation was to leave that money at the reserves.
That may have been Joe's plan, but I don't think that's defensible. That may have been Joe's plan, but I don't think that's defensible. I'm sure there's a magic computer that can figure this out.
I would, I would like to say, I would like to go, go back and confirm this. But my memory serves me correctly, I think for this year, we, when we budgeted the revenues for that fund, we reduced the revenues on the anticipation of one possibility being reducing the increase that due to come up in January, I believe it's nine point five percent. And one thing we possibly talked about was reducing that increase in order to offset that excess charge.
To subsidize the future versus a refund.
Yeah.
As long as we have a strategy for it and are accounting for it here, because I don't think we should have any illusion that that is our money. You know, we took that from people and we shouldn't have. I mean, it wasn't our fault. They, they took it from us and we took it from them, but.
Right. No, tomorrow, I will confirm and I will let the city manager know. But if memory serves correctly, I believe when we talked about the revenues for that wastewater fund, that we did take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to continue on the public safety special revenue fund. That fund increased by one million, representing one point three percent increase. That is the funding earmarks for actual police activity based on council's instruction on the April seventeenth budget study. And the last fund I'm going to talk about is the senior housing fund. We propose, we proposed to have eight hundred thousand transfer from senior housing fund to general fund CIP for Park Vista capital projects. Total cost for the Park Vista capital project is about one point seven million. The rest will be covered by Park Vista Corporation. Any question on this slide? Okay, let's talk about the reserves of fiscal year twenty-four. First one, general fund reserve. So we propose to have twenty-five percent as directed by city council on April seventeenth budget study session. And the second one is economic uncertainty reserve, two, two million. We have been keeping that balance for, for several years. And the number three is the five percent general fund reserve for CIP. That will be transferred to CIP reserve from general fund. And also, we have OPAP, OPAP reserve, which is for retiree house. And this is section one fifteen trust, city set it up in two thousand eight. So right now, we don't have new contribution requirement. It is forty-seven percent funded and the balance is thirty million. So it is expected to be fully funded within ten years by the investment earning. And the next one is pension trust reserve. Right now, the balance is about four point five million. So we recommend that to have five hundred thousand contribution to this pension trust in fiscal year twenty-four. We also have other reserves like workers' comp, general liability, and equipment replacement. As I said, equipment replacement, the total balance is eighteen million. So regarding updating the city's credit rating, in year twenty-twenty-one, city council authorized the issuance of POBs. At that time, city received double A plus bond rating, which is pretty good compared to other cities. Finance staff and elected city treasurer are working with city's financial advisor K N N to undertake rating review with S and P in mid-July with the intention of obtaining a triboi rating for the city. So this is high-level revenue summary for special revenue fund, pretty much status quo. And you can see the senior housing fund has two hundred, two hundred thousand, which is the transfer in from general fund. And total of all special revenue fund revenue is four point four million. Special revenue fund, restricted fund, they can only be used for specific purposes. The arts and the culture advisory committees proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget was presented to the city council on May second. And council approved the following spending items. Total is three hundred sixteen thousand. That include the staff salary and benefit. Here, the, the number is only seventy-five percent. The other twenty-five percent of staff salary will be on general fund. Any questions on this? So debt service funds, city has two debt service funds. One is Douglas Street Gap Closure is funded by traffic mitigation fees. And the second one is pension obligation bonds. So funded mainly by general fund and minimal amount from enterprise water fund and wastewater fund. Annual payment is nine point seven million. So in, as I mentioned, in twenty-twenty-one, P O B pays off U A L, U A L of one hundred forty-four million on behalf of the city. So city has no U A L due to Perth for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Compared to Perth's discounted rate, six point eight percent, with our P O B rate, which is two point five six eight percent. Issuing the P O B saves about eighty-four to eighty-five million for the city over nineteen years.
Can I ask a quick question to the city attorney? Because I'm gonna put him on the spot like I do every time I see the Douglas Street Gap Closure. Is it appropriate to use any other funding mechanisms to repay that traffic mitigation measure? If down the road, if we're in twenty-thirty or twenty-twenty-eight, and I will say this because the cog is here, and we asked for any special measure revenues, if we ask for measure our funding to be applied to that, can we do that?
We'd have to look at the requirements for the measure our funding, but, but there are options depending on the discrete measures that might be in play.
I keep asking, and you keep saying this. So I know you have to look at it, one day we have to look at it. Okay, go ahead.
Enterprises, enterprise funds, water fund and wastewater fund. The fundamental policy goal for enterprise funds is that rate payers pay the cost of service. So both of the funds cost recovery and self-sustaining. So both water and wastewater funds have two rate adjustment in fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five. Three percent for water fund and nine point five percent for wastewater fund. As we just discussed, probably the nine point, did I say, nine point five percent. So probably the nine point five percent for fiscal year twenty-four will be discussed based on the refund from Hyperion.
And, and not just that, though, those were based on the ninety-one percent increase that Hyperion said we needed. Are we sure that those numbers are still valid? That was based on flow rates that are demonstrably obsolete, right? We know those flow rates are inaccurate.
So I've been in touch with Hyperion. They supposed to send me the forecast, they have not done so yet. So as soon as I receive that information, I, I will, I will know. And they know that, that we are waiting for those, for those numbers and, and those forecasts. Because they not only look at the quantity, they also look at the quality of, of the discharge.
Yeah, but we don't have a food processing plant here. I mean, there's, the, the flow, if the flow rates are consistent, there is no reason that our biological or chemical oxygen demand of that flow is going to require a ninety-one percent increase. We know, and so we're putting a forty-five percent increase on residents on that. If their numbers are inaccurate, will we come back to the council to adjust those rate increases? Because those rate increases are there to adjust to their rate increase, which seems based on complete garbage data, as we said at the time.
Yeah, again, you're right. As soon as we know the forecasts and as soon as we know what those numbers gonna be, we know what reserves we have and, and, you know, we're gonna work with finance department and they come and they, they may say, you know what? We do not have to have that nine and a half percent raise this, you know, in this, in this fiscal year. Because we have enough money, the, the forecasts are sufficient, we're gonna have sufficient funds, and we do not need to raise the fee anymore for this, for this fiscal year, if, if that makes sense.
It, it, it does, I just want to make sure. Well, there's two things, right? There's a correction based on the bad flow, but there's ongoing things we built in based on bad data. So if those down the road, if that ninety-one percent increase should have been a thirty-one percent increase, then those nines probably should have been threes.
Well, the way they, they, the way they operate, the way Hyperion operate, they normally forecast for every three years. So as new information is, are received, as, as, as true flows that are reported to Hyperion, they use those numbers for the forecast for the following three years. In other words, you know, they keep changing, they keep, they keep using the new, the new information that we provide them based on those readings we get and based on our flume, the, the new flumes that we have installed, if that makes sense.
Well, those new flumes should provide more accurate data.
Absolutely, a lot more accurate.
Because six hundred more residents that we have in town since twenty-nineteen, I assure you are not ninety-one percent worse, so.
I agree.
So the next one is internal service funds. Equipment replacement fund is one of those. We propose to have revenue two point two million, two point, two point three million. The revenue is the cost charged to all departments based on the equipment item list, equipment replacement item list. And the proposed budget is eighteen million, as I explained. We propose to appropriate all the accumulated available fund for fiscal year twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four. The two other internal service funds are general liability and the workers' comp. They are self-insured with general fund with self-insured retention level seven hundred fifty thousand and the workers' comp is five hundred thousand. So revenue are the cost allocation charged to the other funds and department such as general fund, non-department, public safety departments, water and wastewater funds. General liability is charged based on claims. And workers' comp is charged through payroll based on employee labor cost allocation. And the expenditures are the expected insurance bill that the city needs to pay in fiscal year twenty-four, which include the admin costs, premiums, and the claims. Insurance premium have increased by twelve percent, which is the rate we applied for this proposed budget. So next one is the proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four CIP project for all fund. Total is thirty-four million, including new project nineteen million and the carryover project fifteen million. So for the new project, the nineteen million, you will see the, the last line, seven point six, that's the general fund transfer out to CIP fund. City council authorized five percent general fund CIP reserve funding policy going forward. So five percent of general fund expenditure is four million. And for fiscal year twenty-four, we're doing seven point six million. So that is in compliance with the CIP reserve policy. Okay, so this is a list for the projects that are going to use that seven point six million. You will see the, the Plunge, two point five million, and the Red Park Phase One project, three million. And also some, like, the U C updates, downtown beautification. And also four hundred thousand for general fund CIP reserve. So this is the, the new CIP appropriation for fiscal year twenty-four. And also, we have a carryover from fiscal year twenty-three of eight point two million. So that makes the total CIP for general fund is fifteen point eight million. Okay, the Plunge project. So in fiscal year twenty-three, we have four point seven million available reserve for this project. And in fiscal year twenty-four, we're expecting one million donation from chargers. And also, we are going to appropriate two point five million in fiscal year twenty-four and two point five million in fiscal year twenty-five. So by the end of fiscal year twenty-five, we're going to have total ten point seven million available for this Plunge project. Recreation Park Phase One project. In fiscal year twenty-three, we have one point seven five million available. And we're going to appropriate three million in twenty-four, two million in twenty-five, and two million in twenty-six. So by fiscal year twenty-six, we're going to have eight point seven five million available for the Red Park Phase One project. This bar chart has reflected the, the impact of P O B Topgolf revenue and the Major BT, but it doesn't include the future CIP projects. So you can see the spike in the appropriation in fiscal year twenty-four. The orange bar is due to the transfer of seven point six million from general fund to capital, to CIP for capital projects. So going forward, staff will closely monitor the long-term trend, especially after fiscal year twenty-eight, where the, the fund balance roughly equals to the twenty-five percent of general fund reserve. So only two options to make the green line, which is fund balance, go up. New revenue sources and expenditure control. Do you have any questions for this long-term trend? Okay, so the proposed general fund unassigned balance for fiscal year twenty-four is calculated based on the beginning unassigned fund balance, which is thirty-three million, adding proposed fiscal year twenty-four revenue, eighty-eight point three million, deducting fiscal year twenty-four appropriation, eighty-eight point four million. So the total ending fund balance is estimated at thirty-three million. According to council's policy, twenty-five percent reserve requirement, which is twenty-two million. So now, we have ten point seven million unassigned fund balance, which can be used at the discretion of city council. Since council appropriate one million in fiscal year twenty-three during the May second council meeting for the new P O A labor agreement, staff recommended the following use of the rest of the nine point seven million of unassigned fund balance. First is the seven point two CIP projects. And second is four hundred thousand establish a general fund CIP reserve. And second is four hundred thousand established general fund CIP reserve transferred to funds three oh one. Five hundred thousand contribution to pension trust in compliance with U L policy and Topgolf revenue policy. Four hundred thousand transferred to equipment replacement fund for the loan payment in compliance with Topgolf policy. And that leaves about one point five million reserve for cost of new labor agreement. Okay, to wrap up the presentation, staff recommend council to adopt resolution approving the proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget and capital improvement project budget. Any questions?
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open for public input. Do we have any public input?
We do. We have Mr. Eric Carey.
I was going to read it before we had the thing. That approximately seven million that's going to CIP, we got to look at and score all of those. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity and look forward to continuing this long into the future. I also wanted to give a special thanks to Leifon, the city engineer. He's a big help in our committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have any other public comments? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Per Six, I move.
Baldino, a little second.
Now that there's only three of us, we could just do a... All in favor, right?
Yes, you can.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. No abstentions. All right, council discussion.
Thank you for the presentation. We didn't have a lot of questions, not because we're not interested. It's just we've seen all this before, but it was presented in a very clear and cogent fashion. So any opportunity we can to help educate the folks that live in town of where their tax dollars are going, I think is time well spent. Thank you, Mr. Carey, for your service on the committee ranking those capital improvement projects. I know my years in the planning commission, that list was a lot longer than funds we had and that job was a lot harder. It's nice now that we're in a position where we can start funding some of these much-needed capital improvement programs and your work is included within this budget. With that being said, I think that I want to thank staff and especially the finance department for the hard work that you do to put this all together for us. Your work makes the city run and makes everyone in this room look good, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Baldino. Councilmember Perstik.
I just would like to echo what Councilmember Baldino said. Really appreciate it. And we have been looking at these numbers for quite a while, so... And I'm just really excited that we do have the funds for the capital improvement. I know, and thank you, Mr. Carey, for all your work. It's been a push for us to really put every additional revenues we get into the capital improvement reserve. So I'm just really excited to see that we're making, that we're moving forward. And I just hope that we, you know, my message to the city manager as well as Elias Sassoon has been, let's push forward, we'll find the money. And I just want to continue that message that we, you know, let's get some of these capital improvements that have been behind us, that have been stacking up for quite a while done. And thank you to all your efforts on the finance department for putting together a budget that's really practical and clear and attainable.
Thank you, Councilmember Perstik. These things are difficult to make particularly user-friendly. And I think to people watching at home who are paying exorbitant California taxes to try and figure out all the transfers and things. But I think what's worth stating in this budget is it protects the city by increasing our reserve to twenty-five percent, which is over the last two years, you know, we used to run it about twelve percent. Then we battled to get to seventeen. And as we stare down the possibility of a recession that seems to have been around the corner for the last thirty months, but it's important to have that out there. We take one-time income that comes from the natural gas price increase that led to a sort of unforeseen U U T event, where you had six million dollars you don't usually get, and taking that money and putting it forward to one-time capital improvement costs, I think, is very prudent. And I think by establishing a capital improvement fund, we build for the future to make sure we don't dig ourselves a hole as well. I also think this does a reasonably good job of capturing some things we didn't foresee, right? The public safety sort of issue that we have with this sort of trenchant crime wave of property crime that we're trying to address with an increased police force and recruitment bonuses. Those are one-time costs that we could not have foreseen two years ago. So building that into the budget and still protecting our ability to fund public works and capital improvement is really tricky. And I think this does an adequate job of that. If there's one thing that I think we need to be leery of is we have bargaining units out there that we are still negotiating with and a million and a half dollars in raises for two significantly large bargaining units is going to be tough. So I would say that that is something that we should be mindful of as we go forward in negotiations. And some of those things are just facts of the matter, right? Every three or four years, we go through that iteration. But other than that, I did not see anything in this that wasn't what we had poured over before in the study session or what we'd seen in the manager or otherwise meeting. So I think it captures it well. And with that, I will ask, do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Nope, sorry. Sorry, wait a minute. Council discussion has been followed by the city attorney reading the resolution, which I was just getting to, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor.
By title only, though, please.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. A resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four final operating and capital improvement budget and the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four appropriations limit for the city of El Segundo is available for council review and motion.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Per Six, I move.
Sure. Baldino, a little second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is passed. Now, we will need a separate motion to affirm the following policies: the general fund reserve policy, which is twenty-five percent, the economic uncertainty reserve policy, two million dollars, the Topgolf revenue allocation policy, the unfunded actuarial liability policy, and the inter-fund loan policy. These can all be handled in one motion. Do I have said motion?
Per Six, I move.
Baldino, seconds.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that concludes our public hearing. And then we'll be back to staff presentations. Item fourteen, the South Bay Cities Council of Governments Local Travel Network Wayfinding and Signage Pilot Program. Director Sassoon, will you be presenting with Mr. Legere?
Yes, sir. I sure am.
The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Portem and members of the city council. This item before you is to receive and file a report from South Bay Cities Council of Governments regarding the proposed local travel network wayfinding and signage pilot project. An approval of this pilot project for implementation. The estimated cost of this pilot project is twenty-five thousand dollars. And at this time, I would like to introduce Mr. David Ledger with the South Bay Cities Council of Government to make a presentation. And also, for your information, Ms. Emily Finkel with Fair and Peers, who will be designing this pilot project, is here in case there are some technical questions from the city council. So at this time, I would like to ask David.
Good evening, Mayor Portem and council members. David Legere here on behalf of the South Bay Cities Council of Governments. And I want to start off with a big thank you to Elias. He's been a great partner. A great partner throughout this project. We've been working on it probably a year and a half or longer now. And he's been a blessing to have working alongside of us. So I was here about a little over a year ago, giving you guys an overview of the local travel network. And we've made some good progress and I wanted to bring you up to date on that and give you a little bit more info about the pilot project. So for those that don't know, the local travel network is an approximately two hundred forty-three route mile network of slow-speed streets in the South Bay. Not building any new infrastructure, existing streets that are already in your neighborhood. It's a way to provide residents safe and efficient routes to get to destinations in their community using zero emission micro mobility vehicles, anything from a e-scooter, e-bikes, bikes, all the way up to neighborhood electric vehicle, golf carts. Almost entirely on twenty-five mile an hour streets. Occasionally, there will be a thirty-five mile an hour street involved. We cross busier arterials, like Sepulveda, for example, at signalized intersections, so it's a safe way to cross. And since we're not dedicating any lanes to any specific vehicle, it's a way to share the road with all users of the road. And the important thing is that this is about personally-owned vehicles, not the bird and lime and rental market that kind of fell upon us several years ago that's now currently banned. So on the left-hand side, you'll see all of our neighborhood streets. On the right-hand side is a distilled version of those streets that we've used as our baseline for the local travel network. This is just a little overview of the types of vehicles that could potentially be using the network. And it's not just for personally-owned vehicles, for people to travel around. You'll see that delivery services are also starting to venture into these modes. The one on the upper right-hand corner is UPS. They actually use these little scooters up in like the Pasadena area, I think, so that they don't bring their big trucks down these very narrow streets, blocking traffic. They'll park in an accessible area, load up packages in their little scooter, and pull their little trailer around to their destinations. Down below, you'll see Circuit. It's kind of an extended golf cart. Manhattan Beach had been a pilot a few years ago. And you can think of that as sort of like a neighborhood circulator, bringing residents and guests to major locations in the city. So some of the resident benefits of micro mobility. The COGS did a lot of research on how we get around in the South Bay. Ninety percent of our trips are less than ten miles from home and seventy percent of those are actually less than three miles from home. So we really don't need to get in our SUV or gas car, powered car, to make these short trips. A lot of them can be made in these micro mobility devices. They generally are safer. They don't travel as fast as a car and don't weigh nearly as much as a car. So if there is an impact amongst them or something like that, it's much lower impact on safety. They're more equitable. These devices can range anywhere from a couple hundred bucks for an e-scooter up to twelve thousand or so for a neighborhood electric vehicle. The used market is starting to develop there for the golf carts. And those generally are about half price from what you'd buy one new. Like most EVs, very minimal maintenance costs, not so much to go wrong as your complicated gas-powered car, and low fueling costs. And it's still a way to deliver high-quality door-to-door service that most of us are so accustomed to. Some society benefits. It's a way to reduce congestion on major arterials. The goal is to move some of the traffic that would normally be driving on an arterial to some of the neighborhood streets. There's a figure that we've, I forget where we found it, but currently approximately eighty percent of the traffic is on twenty percent of our streets. And so if we just spread just a tiny bit of that out, you could actually make some noticeable differences on our arterials. Obviously, because these are electric vehicles, better air quality, you reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This also could support public transit by getting folks that first-last-mile service to green line stations, bus stops, et cetera. The local travel network is actually a very low-cost infrastructure project. We're not talking about shovels in the ground. Maybe occasionally you have to put in a new signpost if you don't have one. But beyond that, we're not digging up the streets or making any major improvements. These vehicles are actually, they call it level-one charging, so just your regular old house outlet. You don't need the high-power Tesla chargers and those sort of things to power these vehicles. And it's also a way to potentially make housing more affordable. If you get creative and put parking requirements in that are for smaller vehicles, it helps also reduce housing costs while also still providing parking amenities for residents in those buildings. Some community benefits that I've kind of gone over before: lower-cost zero emissions. There's many vehicles out there for all types of mobility, whether you're a senior, disabled, fully-abled. There's pretty much a device out there for you. And I've gone over those other ones already. So I'm getting into the, one of the first corridors that the COGS has been working on, we call it the Beach Corridor. And it's El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, and Redondo Beach. This is a little zoom in on El Segundo. The solid blue lines are the routes that we selected in the planning process with Elias and staff, Environmental Commission Committee. The dotted lines are future connections that we will need to make with the city to connect you in and out. As you'll see, you're a little bit of an island right now. And that's due to legal requirements, mostly speed limits. Getting onto Visita Omar to go south into Manhattan Beach or on Douglas, for example, to get into Manhattan Beach as well, or east into Hawthorne. This is speed limits of streets. As you'll see, on the west side of P C H, everything is a twenty-five mile an hour street. On the east side, it's a little bit different. You've got some twenty-five mile an hour streets, some thirty-five, a couple forty. And all the dots are locations that are, we've identified as likely destinations for residents and guests that would be visiting. A little zoom in on the left-hand side. Keep this in mind as I move into the pilot project. So the pilot, what we're doing is thinking a little bit outside of what we've been working on and considering a local travel network zone. So instead of going in and selecting which streets right off the bat, because the west side of the city is all L T N friendly, we're proposing a pilot that creates an L T N zone so that folks that know that they're traveling on the west hand, the west side of the city, know that they should be cautious of slow-speed vehicles alongside their cars. On the east side, we'd pick routes and provide wayfinding signage to make sure folks get to safe crossings. So we'll be using Grand and Maple as ways to get folks from the west side east or folks on the east side west. And the important thing is on the folks east side west, going west, because there's businesses and employment areas over there. We felt it was important to put wayfinding signage up on that side so folks traveling west know, okay, I can go to downtown this way or to the park this way, the library, the beach, et cetera. This will be a little bit quicker deployment. Elias has some, an example of a temporary sign right here. This is, it's high-quality, it's not just a little poster. It's not the metal permanent signs. Feel free to play around with it. And because we don't have to go through the whole, the whole planning process of where all the signs will go on routes, we can get this up and running a little bit quicker than the larger route project. What we want to do is start facilitating the mode shift. That, at the end of the day, will be the really hard part. Human behavior is to travel a certain type of way. For the South Bay, we have a tiny mode share of transit, for example, because we don't really have a great transit system down here. And it takes a lot of effort to get folks to think differently about how they travel. And so this is a way to start on that process through coordination, for example, with the city, hotels, businesses, and others to sort of incentivize thinking about using micro mobility now instead of waiting until we get the route network up and running. This could be, for example, preferred parking. If we had an extra space around, let's say, the farmer's market, we could say, this is for the farmer's market, micro mobility parking, as a way to incentivize folks to use micro mobility to get to the farmer's market. And we also plan on setting up a booth at the farmer's market going forward to engage with the community, brief them on the idea, get their feedback input. And the pilot's a way to kind of determine the efficacy of the zone versus the routes. It's a little bit easier to put more paint down on the street as opposed to put all the paint down and then take it off. And so we want to kind of incrementally build this project. And the great thing is that it's funded initially through your Measure M local return funds. And then when the Measure M sub-regional funds for the project are received, or approved by Metro later this year in fall, you can pay yourself back and use the... by Metro later this year in fall, you can pay yourself back and use the subregional grant funds to pay for the pilot. So one of the big things is what destinations are important for the city to include on the signage? Some of the examples, downtown, City Hall, restaurants, parks, libraries, beaches, schools, if there's any others, we're happy to hear them. But this is the important part because we need to get those destinations so then we can start printing the signs, getting everything ready to install. For those that don't know, that's the rolling turtle. We went through a whole branding exercise of figuring out what, what signs would be best, and it's been pretty unanimous that the rolling turtle is both unique and sort of eye-catching and makes people think about what, what is this? It doesn't necessarily blend in with all of your other street signs and just kind of blend into the background. And so California Transportation Commission was excited when Jackie presented this. LA Metro's been excited. I don't think we've ran into anybody that's not like the turtle. And it, it kind of offers other, other opportunities for us to have maybe a naming contest and that kind of stuff to get folks excited about the overall project. These are some examples of what you might see on the street. You've got destinations, mile distances, directional arrows. Best practice is generally not more than three destinations per sign, so it's kind of important to know what, what's the top priority of the city, either an economic development standpoint, whatever. There's multiple ways of figuring out what, where we want folks to go. So on the right-hand side is our first draft of what a LTN zone sign might be. It is a little repetitive, the language, and so we're thinking of others, but it's a way to let folks know that they're now entering a slow-speed zone. There are some technical issues with using certain terminology, and so we're trying to avoid all of those to either increase liability to the city or risk or anything like that. The, the most important thing about the project is it's a way to make you, all users of the road acknowledge that they're sharing the road. Like a previous speaker said, bikes are allowed to go anywhere. Just recognizing that you, as a vehicle driver, are sharing the road with a potential slower speed vehicle is the most important thing to get folks to drive safer. And if it's successful, what the COG's doing right now is creating a playbook for LTN implementation so that any city in the South Bay could pick up that book and figure out, okay, this is how we implement in our city. If the zone signs are effective through this pilot, we'll be adding an extra chapter for areas that are similar to El Segundo where they have large contiguous portions of slow-speed streets that don't necessarily need routes. And it'd just be an extra, extra arrow in your quiver to build this project. General timeline, it's a little speedy, but we're, we're trying to get this done quickly. Over the next month or so, the city's going to identify signs and locations and destinations. The COG will do the procurement of those signs. The city will install the signs the following month, and we'll celebrate it with a ribbon-cutting of some sort. And then through the rest of the year, maybe into the beginning of the next year, we'll do a lot of outreach and evaluation, both with the community at the farmer's market, we'll probably go back to the Environmental Committee, other groups that you guys think we should go to, we're happy to make those, those visits. And then other subregional kind of things in support of the project. It's a lot of education, marketing, network development, so we've got some grants, applications in right now that would help fund some ride-and-drive events, education, potentially partnering with bike groups and other community groups. One thing that we want to try and find some funds for is a right-size-your-right tool. A lot of us think we need a lot more range in our vehicles than we actually do, but if you actually looked at where you travel, it's probably pretty close to where you live. So you don't necessarily need a 300-mile-range Tesla to make your trips. For those that don't know, the state has an e-bike rebate program that's rolling out this year, so there will probably be an even larger influx of e-bikes down the road. We are also working with other South Bay cities to implement their areas of the LTN. And it's, at the bottom, it's pretty much all hands on deck for this. COG, cities, vendors, and all the stakeholders in the community. So some of the next steps, we hope that you all will champion the local travel network in El Segundo. I know the mayor is, and Mayor Potem, both have neighborhood electric vehicles. We toured Assemblymember Maru Succi sometime last year. That's a great way to do it. Tracy on the Environmental Committee is sort of like a poster child. She's got rid of a full-sized SUV and got a neighborhood electric vehicle, a used one, actually, I think, and uses that to travel around the town, and that's exactly what we want folks to do. You don't necessarily have to replace your first car, but for that second, third, fourth vehicle that we've estimated there's about 200,000 to 300,000 of in the South Bay, this is a perfect way to clean up your mobility. If you wanted, if you had a car for maybe a 16-year-old that you don't want to necessarily get on the freeway, a golf cart's a great way to keep them local and slow and safe. We help, we hope that you'll help us with community engagement, promoting the LTN. We're going to engage with the residents of the farmer's market. If you use micro mobility, document it, maybe share it on Twitter, Facebook. If you don't, just think about how you do travel, and if you could, make some of your local trips using a micro mobility vehicle. And if you don't, encourage your friends or family that do, and just drive cautiously. At the end of the day, we should all just be looking out for each other and keeping each other safe. And at the end of it, we welcome your feedback. And that's, I have time for questions. That's our executive director's contact info. Mine is David L. at southbaycities.org, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Legere. Council, questions or comments?
Well, thank you for the presentation. I was at the Environmental Committee, so I've seen this twice. Couple of questions. So the whole idea is to encourage people not to drive a car, right?
Yeah.
Can you go back to the, the actual local travel network, that's the blue lines? There you go. Yep. So I might understand that this type of sign will be posted on these routes, or are you planning where the entire residential neighborhood is going to have turtle signs?
For the pilot, we would probably, and that's some work that Emily and Elias will do, is figure out exactly where the signs will go. But because the pilot isn't kind of channeling folks on any specific streets, it'll be more like a gateway sign. So folks that are maybe entering from the east or west, or at the south end or the north end, maybe on Imperial, coming down Main Street, for example, it'd be, welcome to the local travel network, something like that. So it's, it's not going to be as robust of a signage plan necessarily as, as what the route project could be.
Okay. Because my concern honestly is if you declare the entire residential side a local travel network, then you kind of dilute the importance of what we're trying to accomplish. You want to educate drivers
Right.
to be careful, but we've got no shortage of kids on electric bikes in this town. So I think it's a great idea if we can designate some routes so that kids know if I want to go to high school, if I want to go to the beach, I'm going to be on this route. And then when the drivers drive, we'll be used to seeing scooters and electric bikes. But if it's just kind of like a, anywhere you go is a local travel network, it won't work, especially on the west side. You've got really narrow streets, cars parked, it's, it's hard to see. You know, we're a town where you have to pull over and wave so someone else can drive by. So I like the idea of limiting it, or at least designating it, so that folks who drive and don't drive have a good understanding and get used to the repetition of knowing I'm going to encounter an electric bike on Grand.
Got it.
If you will. And then how do you measure success on this?
So I think the first, first level is just awareness in the community. Do folks see the signs? Do they know that local travel is, micro mobility is a way that they can get around? In the long run, it's seeing a mode shift. Do we see an increase in neighborhood electric vehicles, for example? In this, I don't have this El Segundo-specific numbers, but our goal is to match the transit mode share. So if we can just get 3% of drivers into micro mobility, you're already matching what we've got on public transit. And so that's kind of our subtle goal, is to try and get to that point, and if we exceed it, wonderful.
Okay. And then do you know if any of these blue lines overlap with our own Meister, South Bay bicycle plan?
I don't know off the top of my head which ones do, but in our process, we have tried to overlay on the master plan everywhere possible so that we implement the master plan while we're implementing this.
Okay. Because that would make sense.
Right.
Because we've been, as you, as you heard Jay say, he has been a champion of more bike lanes and making bikes a priority, and so if we're going to go in this direction, it should overlap with the plans we've already kind of, because we have streets that we've said would be good for that. So those would be my comments. Thank you for selecting our city. I like that. We're kind of being this bubble, right? We're not going to be connected to anyone else.
Right.
So it's a little pilot program for El Segundo to get people out of their cars, onto a bike or a scooter, and just to make people more aware so that we're safer and a little more courteous.
Yep. And the great thing is that Elias submitted a Measure M application for the route project. So if you, in January or so, decide that that's how you want to proceed, you've got the funding already squared away to move forward with that, that option.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So thank you as well. I think it's, I think we're moving, it's a great way for us to move in this direction. And to Councilwoman Baldino's point, we do have a lot of kids on bikes in town already. The one thing that comes with that is bike racks. And I know that Elias, we've talked about using some art funds to get some fun bike racks, and maybe we could do, if we have it branded with this South Bay local travel network, we could use some of the Measure M funds. So let's see if we can try to, because I know, especially even at the beach, a lot of kids were, are going to be riding their electric bikes down the beach, and there's not very many bike racks down there. If I, and they're kind of all just, the kids just kind of throw the bikes. And I just think we need to do a better job of providing a place, a safe place for them to store their bikes downtown, at our parks, and at, because I don't know, how many bike racks do we even have at Rec Park? Do we have many?
Not as many as we have railings to shackle bikes to.
Right. So I just, I think we just have to look at the whole picture.
Sure.
And make sure that we are, at the same time, looking at putting up signs to encourage the ridership, but also to have the bike or the locking capability.
And you're spot on. That, that's a, a big part of the larger project, is making sure that you have all of those amenities, even charging where, where it makes sense
Right.
for folks. And so the, the network itself is just the, it's uncommon, you say, an infrastructure project's the low-hanging fruit, but in this situation, building the project is actually probably the easiest part of, of this whole effort, so.
Right. And then maybe in some of our downtown area, we could create like golf cart parking, you know, especially in that fires, where the fires, in the fire station parking where it turns into the evening parking. Maybe we make that a golf cart parking in the afternoon, in the evenings. There's, there's some fun ways to make it like, where people will be encouraged to participate in.
Thank you.
Great, great suggestion. I'd be working with Michael, my colleague, about that parking study citywide, and this would be something that we would also include that in that overall parking analysis for the city.
You're talking about a citywide parking permit program?
Not only permit program, but also how we're going to deal with a parking issue citywide.
We all agree that if you had a golf cart, you'd just leave it wherever you want, because nobody knows what the rules are anyways. You just, it's sideways and... A few things, and thank you, David. Obviously, this is something that has been a bit near and dear. This, by virtue of it focusing on, on slow-speed vehicles, I think there is an important diversion somewhat from cyclists, and I know that we've covered this 1,000 times at committees, but but there's, you know, there's a cadre of people, particularly in the, the people who commute by bicycle and are part of the sort of the bicycle, the grand bicycle plan. These people who are biking at 35 and 40 miles an hour. And so them being on, say, El Segundo Boulevard as part of the master plan would slightly differ from sort of the golf cart and leisure bike rider. So it's a little bit, it's two people sort of differentiated by purpose. So there, there can be some divergent points from the bicycle master plan with the local travel network, just by virtue of the nature of the pace and purpose by which people are traveling. And so you see some divergence. That's why you see El Segundo Boulevard not covered in this while it is in the bicycle master plan. Now, this is the first I've heard of local travel zones. I agree with Councilmember Baldino, is I think we are at risk of sort of diluting it, and also at the same time, sort of infuriating drivers that would otherwise be fine sharing the road with slow-speed drivers. They'd be like, oh, God, I'm in another slow-speed place where, you know, some guy's going to be rolling in the middle of the lane at 20 miles an hour. So I think that we would probably be safer with, with designating routes. But I think there is a purpose here too of, you know, one of the difficult things is it's not a measure of success, there's not a quantitative measure on this, but it does sort of establish a pattern of behavior and sort of an acceptance of these things are out there. So when my beloved Phase Two comes through, which does find a way to link us, you know, in the proverbial, how do I get from, you know, Torrance to, to El Segundo on, on a slow-speed vehicle, that that could one day, battery sufficing or battery capacity be possible? And I know that there's some, some constraints infrastructure-wise on that, but...
We did apply for a grant to start doing that work.
I know.
Hopefully in the next month, we'll have some good news for you.
As Elias knows, there is a narrowing of lanes on Vista del Mar that's an issue, and then an issue of us getting over to Douglas and sort of taking us into, to the mall area in Manhattan Beach. But I think the signs turned out really well, and I, and I sort of trust deputizing the, the staff to come up with the appropriate directional wayfinding about where to send people. With that in mind, so we have to have council consents to receive and file? Do we have that?
Let me make one more recommendation, suggest, Elias. In the residential areas, we probably don't need that many wayfinding signs for the folks who live in town. I get it, for the commercial areas, downtown, you know, all that's great, but I have been approached about the urban blight from boxes and wires and everything else, so let's just ease ourselves into this so we're not just facing a backlash of signs, sign, everywhere there's signs.
Of course. And I'd like to share this with the city council, as I did with the Environmental Committee. The intentions, and it is in the staff report, our intentions are not to install any additional poles. We're going to take advantage of the existing street signs and the poles that already exist in installing these. But we need to also be mindful of that and minimize the clattering as much as we possibly can.
I have this sudden vision of this little pole where El Segundo sign used to be with this, just a one, just a one turtle. Do I have a consensus to receive and file?
Yes.
All right. And I would entertain a motion to direct staff to work with the COG on this pilot project.
Yeah. And you're working with the Environmental Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
And one question, if I may ask, if you could go back to the destinations, if you would, does the city council have any preference in any particular destination? We have, can you go back to the slide that shows the destinations?
This one?
Yes. So the destinations could be downtown, could be City Hall, could be Aquatic Center. I think we'll, we'll definitely will work with COG, but is there any preference on the city council's side for any specific...
Downtown and parks and library or...
Yeah, library, schools.
Right. So it's all there.
You know, places where, where people from, who don't live here, would want to know.
Okay. So you pretty much agree with what we have there?
Hit the major notes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
But they do, I don't know if you want to put the schools in there, because they will, will be writing...
Schools will be there, maybe also aquatic center, maybe plunge. I'm thinking that we may want to add plunge, maybe.
Yes.
You have that sign made. I wouldn't hang that one up first.
Thank you so much.
Otherwise, we could have a lot of, of golf carts banging on doors.
Thank you so much.
All right. We have a, a motion waiting a second.
Uh, yeah, a second. Baldino, seconds.
Didn't you, did you move? Did he?
I thought you just asked for consensus, and then I asked a question.
No, there, we had consensus high before.
Yeah. You didn't even start with the motion yet.
No, he moved. We have Councilmember Perstig on a second.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Committees' commissioned board presentations, reports, city clerk. City treasurer, you have the investment portfolio report for March 2023.
So patient, Matt.
So patient, Matt.
I think I'm gonna try and do it up there. Never done it before. Up in front, front and center. Oh, that was not it. Oh, did I do that? Break it?
Let me guess what the password is.
Oh, no.
This is our inflation-adjusted portfolio.
Oh, no, guessing at passwords now?
All of our money was at Silicon Valley Bank.
There we go. Okay, now.
Oh, it went big though.
You're welcome. There you go.
All right. Okay, so, uh, there's actually been a lot that's happened since the last time I got in front, uh, of you here. Um, namely, we've made a lot of investments. Um, we have met, we have convened the IAC again. We have two new members that have been very good minds to add, uh, have a lot of fixed income experience, which obviously you guys helped, um, bring on, bring on board. Um, and then we had a, a pretty big banking crisis, um, which, uh, luckily, we came through unscathed, not that, that, um, I was thinking we would. Um, so, first slide, let's see if I can do this. Okay, so here's the summary. Uh, the big changes, uh, on this slide were, uh, we increased our exposure to CDs. We bought, um, I think it was twenty, uh, actually, sorry, about nineteen million worth of CDs, and then we bought about fifteen million worth of, uh, medium-term notes. Um, and, uh, ju- this is a slide I added, uh, just recently, which is just kinda to show you what, how the portfolio has evolved through time. Is, uh, the top shows the, the value of, of our investments, um, then it's the percentage of the total, and then the weighted average maturity type. So what you see is that orange line, uh, you know, our reserve portfolio, which is kind of our longer term, obviously the opposite of the liquidity portfolio, um, had been kinda waning, um, purposefully because there weren't any investment opportunities. And you can see that, uh, towards the end of last year, we really started to invest that, uh, the liquidity portfolio into the reserve portfolio. So we're liquidating Camp and, and Leif and bringing it into, uh, longer term investments. And as you can see, the weighted average maturity is, has gone down from, you know, at the end of two thousand and nineteen, from about two and a half years, down and now back up to about two and a half years. So that's, two and a half years is about where we think it should be, uh, cuz if you think about kind of the average of a five-year bond, you know, half of that would be two and a half years. Uh, this is just a pie chart that shows, um, the same things in a different way. I don't think it's worth digging into too much. Um, this is the portfolio ladder by quarter. You can see that we're really kinda starting to get diversified through time here. Uh, we don't have, uh, much in two thousand and twenty-eight, but, uh, in June, we're gonna be rolling a treasury bill, a ten million dollar treasury bill that was meant to mature at the time of the P O B payment into, uh, June of twenty twenty, June of two thousand and twenty-eight. So that'll happen in the next, uh, month, actually. Uh, we also kinda like to be diversified by asset class through time, and that's, uh, happening here cuz you can see that, you know, all these colors are pretty well diversified as, as we go through the years. Um, investments by maturity date, uh, again, this is kind of a, more of a laddering thing. It just kinda shows you, you know, I'd say the, the furthest four bars are most important, which shows that, again, we're diversified through time. Uh, this is the portfolio, and I think the most important thing here is the medium-term notes. Uh, this is line by line, everything that we own. Uh, the good news is, is there's no big problem banks in there. So that was the big scary thing, is that, you know, we had some Credit Suisse, or we had some Silicon Valley Bank, or, uh, one of those problems. Uh, we don't have any of those, and that, that's kind of where, you know, that's where all the, the drama has been. Uh, so we, um, we managed to avoid those. The rest of these are mainly just, uh, negotiable CDs, which, uh, bear no credit risk at all. So, um, we don't have to worry about those. Let's see. And the transactions, so, uh, this was, uh, we were very busy, uh, in the Treasury Department. Uh, these are all the transactions that we made, uh, in the first quarter, most of them being, again, CDs and, um, and medium-term notes or corporate bonds. Um, just because there are so many of these, I made another graphic to kinda show how they went into, how, how they were diversified. Um, and you can see that most of them are two, three, four, and five-year bonds from today. Um, and most of the, and the majority of them are actually three and five-year, and that's kind of, those are the maturities that most, most CDs are offered, and, and most, uh, medium-term notes are offered, cuz they line up with how the treasury notes, uh, are offered as well. Uh, here's a pretty bland pie chart, uh, of showing the, the same thing, or kind of just, just where we've been investing for the transactions. So we had eighty CDs and nineteen medium-term notes for a total of ninety-nine investments. Uh, so Dino and, and Latonya have been working overtime, uh, putting together these tickets and these wires, so, uh, big thanks to them. Um, interest received, these are the transactions. You can see, you know, the bottom, actually the bottom, which is the yellow. We had that forty-six million invested in U.S. Treasuries, which thanks to the raising of the debt ceiling, we don't have to worry about those being paid off. Um, then we have, uh, in February and March, uh, those were kind of where most of our medium-term notes, and then our CDs were invested. We've invested a considerable amount more than that in the last couple of months as well, and, um, I'm officially being throttled by Dino to stop investing for a little while and take a little break. Um, so, uh, you can see in the last quarter, uh, we had about eight hundred thousand dollars in interest, uh, and I expect that to continue to go up, uh, every quarter, um, which is obviously a great thing. Um, so that will be in the four or five million dollars in interest per year, uh, going forward. Um, so here's the compliance. Uh, everything is within, within compliance. We, we, we obviously changed the policy a little while ago, and, um, everything, all those weights are less than the max weight, so that's a good thing. We're not really close on anything as well. Uh, rating compliance, nothing has changed substantially from there. Uh, we're all investment grade. We've had, we have a few triple Bs, which we're not allowed to buy, but we're allowed to hold. Um, nothing to really worry about, though. Uh, Leif is a, less of an issue. We don't have much money with Leif. Uh, this is kind of how the rates have changed through time, so it's not as important right now. But you can see that the, in the top, the, the Leif rate is continuing to go up now, and it's going back up again now that rates are rising. They're a little bit slower to kinda catch up to, to rates, so, you know, that's starting to look a little bit more attractive, but still not quite there. City cash flows, uh, trying, I, I don't know if I'm gonna go too far into this. We just had a lot of talk on the budget and all that, and you guys are well aware of what's going on. Um, net change, yeah, I think you guys have had enough of this for the day. The economic environment, um, so, uh, you know, the, the, the yield curve is still inverted. Those top two lines are, uh, end of March and end of prior year. Uh, you can see that the rates, rates are actually pretty high, especially considering, or in comparison to a year ago. Um, this is, uh, an interesting chart. Uh, I, it kinda shows kinda where we've been over the last, uh, ten years now. Um, and as you can see, you know, we put close to ninety million dollars to work right at that, at that peak over the last, like, quarter. Um, so we've been kinda hanging on through, you know, twenty twenty when rates were near zero. And, um, the timing's been pretty good so far. I mean, who knows where rates are gonna go? It sounds like people are, it sounds like rates are gonna go down, and the forecasts are that we're gonna peak in July and then start to come back down. But, um, it's anyone's guess as to what is really gonna happen. Uh, this shows just how inverted the yield curve is, which is really kind of unprecedented, um, with how, how, um, how inverted it is. Uh, again, that's a forecast for recession. People have been talking about recession for a while now. Um, I, I think it's kind of more of a, a win than if. Um, so, you know, we'll see how that, how that turns out. I mean, that's, that's the reason that they'd be, they'd be lowering rates is to kind of, you know, get the economy going again. That's what everyone's expecting. Unemployment versus inflation, so this is, uh, where unemployment has, has gone down considerably. Inflation is going down. Things are looking positive from an inflation perspective, at least the last, uh, few prints that we've gotten. Five-year inflation prediction, um, so the market is really thinking that we're gonna get this under control. You can see it's about two and a half percent over the next five years. That's the expectation. Um, so, you know, despite the fact that we've had some really high, high prints in the last year, the market seems to be optimistic that things are gonna, uh, get back on track. Uh, the last thing is just kinda, I've shown this before, but sometimes it's interesting to see kinda what we're looking at and what the, um, this, this was as of like a couple of weeks ago, I think. And this is kind of the different asset classes that we have that are on the market, that we have an option to invest in, and those are kinda on, those are the rates we're looking at. Yellow is the U.S. Treasuries of different maturities. So you can see, you know, again, there, that's, that's that inversion that, um, I've been talking about, so. That is it from the Treasury Department, unless there are any questions.
Council questions, comments?
Um, no questions, but I, I, I think you kinda underplay the amazing job you've been doing for our city. Uh, if I just compare slide five thirty-one, where it shows you holding on to liquidity, with slide five sixty, where the rates really start to jump, and to see that, that's kinda how you timed it, I mean, that's, that's admirable. But I also want you to know, I ran into, um, Roger Neves and Vince Zuppo at one of the local watering holes, and they just wrapped their first meeting. Nothing but the highest regard for you and the finance department, and they were just so happy to be contributing to the city. Um, and so it's great to hear that they're, they're working hard and they're working out, but...
Well, yeah, they've been great.
Yeah, you, uh, really impressive work, Matt. Thank you so much for the time you, you donate to our city. I appreciate it.
Anything else? Thank you, treasurer.
All right, thanks.
Okay, council member reports. Councilmember Baldino.
Yeah, I've got a few items. Let me start with, um, so on our consent calendar, we approved the Park Vista budget. Uh, and I just wanna mention, as the senior housing liaison, I've been to a couple of meetings. And I wanted to take a minute, since the budget was on the calendar, to really thank Neil Cabin and the Cabin Group for the work they've been doing over the years. One of the meetings I went to, he had been working for about a year with, uh, AT&T or somebody to get cable and internet to every resident. Currently, they were paying themselves at varying rates, fifty, seventy-five dollars. He got a rate of like thirty-five dollars for everyone that Park Vista was paying for. So it reduces the residents' costs, provides more service. Uh, and you should've seen the patience of the Time Warner rep who came to explain to the residents every question about Wi-Fi and modems and everything else. So, um, uh, we run a great facility over there. We're very lucky to have the Cabin Group, and I'm grateful for what they do. I wanna thank, uh, Chief Bermudez. I did a ride-along in May with Sergeant Levett and Officer Kushner with our police department, and I asked to go on the homeless outreach to see how our police department interacts with the homeless. And we have a resource with the Los Angeles Housing Authority where, you know, our police department knows very well who our unhoused people are and where to find them. They go out regularly, ask if they want help, services, housing, and they're, are free to say no. But the level of professionalism and compassion that I saw, uh, was really remarkable, and it just kinda adds to, the more I learn about the job our men and women in uniform do, the more appreciation I have of how hard that job is. Uh, so I wanna thank the police for that. Um, let's see, I did attend the Planning Commission meeting. This Thursday is this, Planning Commission is having another meeting about the downtown-specific plan. So if people wanna come give comments about outdoor dining, parking, or anything else, please come to the Planning Commission this Thursday. Uh, let's see, uh, let's, I attended a League of Cities meeting with our city manager to hear Assemblymember Meritucci talk about AB seventeen oh eight, which was legislation he was trying to get passed to help lessen the impacts of Prop forty-seven, which made shoplifting basically not a crime. Uh, we heard from the police sergeants of, uh, Bell Gardens. Um, unfortunately, the bill has already been killed in a committee at the Assembly House. The, uh, Committee on Public Safety voted it down, and what it was trying to do was make people engaged in serial shoplifting or these, uh, grab-and-gos if they're repeat offenders to be able to ratchet it up to a felony, so there's some actual consequences. Um, that died, but what I read did pass is Senate Bill five fifty-three, which is going to make it illegal for store employees to stop shoplifters. So our state is basically telling us that, uh, shoplifting is not a crime. They don't want the folks to work in the stores to confront or stop shoplifters, which is only gonna increase the burden on our police. It's only gonna make, uh, their jobs harder and make our police enforcement more expensive. Um, and then, oh, I also attended the Environmental Committee where Dr. Stensham spoke, and the, the COG came out and gave us their, their introduction about the, uh, slow turtle that we saw today. So that's it for me.
Councilmember Pierstik.
I just wanna, um, congratulate all the graduates that are gonna be taking place this week and last week. Um, so all the way from kindergarten, all the way up to, from, um, eighth grade gra- or twelfth grade graduation. So congratulations to everyone. And then I also wanna remind people about the Beach Shuttle. So if we could just, cuz the kids will be taking the Beach Shuttle soon, next, start next week. If we could do a push on an outreach to let people know that it is available, um, and it's something that we can be using. And I'm sure there'll, a lot of those e-bikes will be down at the beach, so if we could get some bike racks down at the beach, or at least encourage the, um, especially where the, um, the, uh, the junior guards, don't they all kind of ride their bikes down there and, and take that bike? So, if that would be great, if we could get that done. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pierstik. I have a few items. I think the first one, if you'll permit me to go down a small rabbit hole. Uh, when I was first elected, I received an obligatory letter before my first meeting that told me that I was leading all of El Segundo on a road to serfdom and socialism, and how we were, as a city government, totally, totally destroying the city with misuse of tax dollars. And I will tell you, the first thing I did was read it and realized the address was a few doors down from me. So I dutifully walked over there and knocked on the door, and nobody answered. But several of the neighbors came over and told me to just be patient. And so they let me into the house, and they brought the gentleman there out. He was in a wheelchair. They made him coffee. They put a blanket out and facilitated the conversation. And those neighbors did that for him because when they were younger, he taught them key tools in machine shop. He taught them how to build things, and he looked out for them. And those guys, in that moment, taught me a tremendous amount about the sense of community at El Segundo. And the ringleader was Steve O'Quatt. And this is, I think, Stevie's last meeting at El Segundo TV. And he has more El Segundo in that beard of his and the spirit of it than a lot of us. Because George Hoops, my neighbor, was by no means the world's nicest man, but he was a good man. And Stevie saw that, and they had a great relationship. And he and those fellow neighbors were tremendous. They certainly didn't know me from Adam, but they knew him, and they took great care of him. And when Stevie moves to Arizona, we're gonna miss him, cuz he is a great guy. Uh, and hopefully, he brings that awesome, awesome sixty-seven Pontiac around still. Um, so Steve, uh, you're probably on the other end of the TV. Thank you. You're awesome. Uh, with that also, I will include some, some rudimentary notes. Uh, the Deputy City Manager and I worked with some venture capital groups trying to, uh, attract El Segundo investment for, um, startups and startup funding, and showed that we are, in fact, the most accessible part of Silicon Beach. Uh, more on that to follow as developed. That is a project, uh, on the economic development front for her. And I will be sitting in for the mayor next week in a meeting with Metro. They're having a summit with mayors based on their new metro plan. Um, that should have all the civility of Saturday night's main event of the eighties. So I will make sure to bring my pro wrestling gear. Uh, that will be an exciting one. Uh, other than that, uh, city attorney reports?
I think it is time. Thank you.
City manager?
I also don't have anything else to add. Thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor Portem.
Very well. Uh, well with that, and here at eight forty-eight on the seventy-eighth anniversary of D-Day, we are adjourned.